Good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone in the audience and the TV audience to the Pitt County Board, Planning Board meeting of May 16th. Beth, would you call the role?
Hey Barefoot?
Here.
Frank Bradham, Jacob Cox?
Here.
Lynn Evans, Lyman Hardy?
Here.
Wanda Harrington?
Here.
Thomas Harris?
Here.
Taylor Keith?
Chloe Malloy?
Here.
Porter Stokes?
Here.
William Newton?
Here.
Let's all stand for prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance, and Mr. Hardy is going to lead us in prayer, and Mr. Stokes in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. How much grace is having the Father, we just thank you alone for this beautiful day, and for all the people that were able to make the meeting tonight. Lord bless us, that as we take care of the business of the Planning Board, that we will make the right decisions. For these and for all your many blessings, we give you praise and thank. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have your minutes in front of you, on February the 15th. Is there any correction?
May be approved.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. We have one rezoning request, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Andrew.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and Board. Hope everybody's doing well tonight. We do have one rezoning request tonight. We have a request by Donna Spence to rezone approximately one acre located on Roosevelt Spain Road from rural agricultural to rural residential. On your screen now is a view of the subject area. Outlined in yellow is the subject property. See on Roosevelt Spain Road, just north of its intersection with Brightley Road. On the screen is a view of the subject property. You'll see the principal residence on the property. This is also the subject property. You can see the accessory structure just next to the residence on the property. Right there, you have a view to the west along Roosevelt Spain Road, and here is a view to the east along Roosevelt Spain Road. You can see a couple adjacent residences in the background. This is the current existing land use out on Roosevelt Spain Road. You'll see it's mainly undeveloped, with a couple strips of single-family residential lined up along Roosevelt Spain Road. Comprehensive Land Use Plan designates this parcel as Rural Residential Agricultural. This designation is intended to include low-density residential, agricultural, forestry, churches, very limited commercial, office, or public institutional uses meeting locational criteria. Locational criteria for non-residential uses would include frontage to a major state highway or secondary road, location at a major intersection, proximity to similar uses, and spatial separation from non-compatible uses. Land uses are expected to develop with subject tank systems. Here is our current zoning map. You'll see the property highlighted in yellow, the subject property is zoned rural agricultural, but right across the street, you'll have a large stretch of land zoned rural residential. Rural Residential District is intended to accommodate low-density, single-family residential uses, and their associated supporting public and institutional uses, and areas that generally do not have access to public or community water and sewer. Given the existing residential use on the subject property and its proximity to existing rural residential zoned properties, rezoning request is in general conformance with the Land Use Plan. Site meets guidelines provided for the Rural Residential District in the Pitt County zoning ordinance. Staff recommends approval of the request by Donna Spence to rezone approximately acre of land located on the northern side of Roosevelt Spain Road from rural agricultural to rural residential, and to advise that it is consistent with the Pitt County Land Use Plan and other applicable plans. Just a little refresher of the rezoning process, in a couple minutes, or actually less than that, a couple seconds will open comments, excuse me, will allow public comment to be opened up to the Board. The Board will then make a recommendation, forward it to the Board of Commissioners. The Commissioners are scheduled to hear this request on June 18th, and at that time, Commissioners will take action on the request. And at this time, I'd like to open it up to any public comment.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak with public comments? Okay. If not, is anyone, any questions from the Board, comments, questions concerning the rezoning request?
What is really the major difference between the RA and the RR designations? I mean, is it detrimental one way or the other for either side?
Size, one day.
The main difference, the Rural Residential District is basically a little bit smaller lot dimensions and square footage requirements. That's the major difference in the two.
Could the use that's on it now continue as it is if it did not pass?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What's the advantage of changing it, then?
It's really, I don't know, I, for this case, it would be, I would, if the applicant would like to speak on that, I'll let her, but I can't really get into the actual use, being that it's a straight-up rezoning request.
Okay. I don't have a problem, I just want to know my reason.
Is there any other questions or comments?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we accept the Planning Board's recommendation and approve.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, thank you. At this time, I want to recognize Mr. Rose, he has gone to discuss the Comprehensive Land Use Plan implementation priorities with us, okay?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, and appreciate you sitting in tonight for our chairman that was unable to be here tonight. Again, you may recall, and for those joining us by TV, we have a newly adopted land use plan that went into effect in December of last year. This plan, of course, had a 20-year horizon. There are a tremendous amount of ideas and implementation strategies included in the plan, and therefore, we can't get it all done in one fell swoop. So, what staff has attempted to do so far, and it's in your agenda package under Planning Matters, is to go through this systematically, looking at each one of the proposed, or each one of the actually adopted implementation strategies now, and try to determine which ones have higher priority, which ones are moderately important to move forward with sometime in the future, and then the lower priority items. So, we'll give you a taste of this tonight. We're really not requesting any action tonight. We want to give you time to absorb some of this, give us some feedback, and we want to bring it back to you at a later date for a true endorsement by the Board. That helps us set our planning goals, our work program for staff over the next year and years to come. So, with that, you may recall, as part of our adopted plan, we have several sections that are involved, and the examples that I'll give tonight are all included in your package, but they're extracted to give you an idea of what we were looking at when we went through to attempt to prioritize them the first time. So, for each one of these sections, we pulled out at least one implementation strategy to kind of give you an idea of what we've attempted to do so far. And again, we've got the high, we've got moderate, and we've got low priorities, and just to give you a timeframe with those that we've attempted to attach to each, high would be within the next five years, between now, let's say 2016, and, or 17, and then on to moderate, five to 10-year block, and low, we've yet to attach any dates or time with What's in this matrix also in your package tonight is truly a matrix, because there's several different columns, and one of the column indicates all the responsibility isn't necessarily upon Planning Staff or Planning Board. It may involve other agencies like Public Health, Department of Transportation, other groups that would help take out some of these implementation, or carry out some of these implementation strategies. So, just as an example, and we'll run through several, but this will give you an idea of how you can read the matrix, the chart that's in front of you, and how hopefully you can give us some input back. For example, under the first section, Growth and Development, the implementation strategy that we have listed here is to use the Comprehensive Land Use Plan consistently as a guide in planning for the extension of new public facilities, or when approving proposed private developments. Very similarly, just what you did earlier in this meeting, when you have a rezoning come before you, you're looking at that land use plan, our chairperson will sign off as to the recommendation, as to whether it is in, whether or not it's consistent with the land use plan. So, we actively do this. This is a high priority, it's an ongoing activity, and just like with rezonings, conditional use permits, that is what's important here for us. So, again, we'll be taking that out on our own, through the Planning Board, through staff, and also to the Commissioner level. Any questions about this, again, all these will follow the same type of format, and you'll see whether we've got it ranked in a certain priority. Okay. Another example, this is one that, this also serves to kind of give you an update on some of our activities over the last couple of months. Through the use of voluntary agricultural districts, and then this particular implementation strategies in the land use section, through the use of voluntary ag districts to discourage non-form development, and the extension of infrastructure into identified prime agricultural areas. This is a high priority right now. Our office is working along with Soil and Water Office to develop the county's first voluntary ag district ordinance. We've had a joint meeting between the Commissioners and the Soil and Water Board, and the Commissioners that attended were very supportive of this, so more than likely, this ordinance will be before the full Board of Commissioners within the next couple of months, and this will basically be an educational-type campaign where we would at least put signage out in areas to indicate that's a voluntary ag district. And again, it is strictly voluntary at this point, and farmers or landowners could sign in as they deemed they would like to have involvement. Other agencies involved, I mentioned Soil and Water, but also Cooperative Extension, and as I mentioned, this is a high priority, and most likely will be, if considered favorably by the Commissioners, in effect probably by the end of this year. So, we'll keep you posted on that. Next up, under Transportation, work with DOT and other local governments to identify and protect planned road corridors. Very high priority, as you're looking at zoning requests, as you're looking at subdivision activity. We certainly don't want to have planned developments going into areas that we already know are reserved for road construction, or other type of transportation construction. Very high priority, it's an ongoing activity. We work with Department of Transportation, we work with our Metropolitan Planning Organization, the MPO, and also the Rural Planning Organization, the RPO. Just as an example here, the Southwest Bypass Corridor, the record of decision has already been recorded. Our activities as far as permitting, we do not issue any permits for new development within that corridor alignment unless there's a variance given by DOT. So, our permitting software already has a hard block, a hold on any of those parcels that are affected by the Southwest Corridor. So, just another one of these items, kind of behind the scenes, that are continuing to be carried out, and it's something that's vital to ensure that we keep our transportation network in good working order. Any questions? Okay, few more. Under Appearance, one of the strategies, strategies is to identify significant crossroad communities, landmarks, and important historic and archaeological features. Work with the state to educate the public about the importance of protecting these community assets. I'll say this is not one of our very top priorities, and we want to give you an example, this is what we deem at staff level anyway, is a moderate priority. And therefore, you can see the completion date pushed out a bit, probably towards the end of this decade, and other groups that would be working with us would be the Pitt County Historical Society and North Carolina Historical Society. Right now, we really don't have any active task associated with this particular project. Another example of a strategy under Community Services and Strategies, support the development and continued enhancement of the Pitt County Community Garden, and identify potential locations for other gardens. This is high, this is through some of our work with the communities, Putting Prevention to Work Grant. You may recall, with Public Health officials coming before this Board while we were developing our land use plan, this is one of their initiatives. We've got a new community garden out at the District Park on County Home Road, very, very popular, I'll say. We've got people lined up to try to get plots out there. It is a very active area, if you've been by there this time of year. Yes, sir?
What, what does a person have to do to get a plot?
Right now, it is a waiting list, so they do need to contact the Cooperative Extension Office, and Joni Torres is our community garden technician, and she has a running list of folks. Typically, last year, we were able to get all the folks off the waiting list and have them on their own plots, but as soon as it starts the springtime, other folks want to get in there, and typically, that's when the waiting list starts. So, call the Cooperative Extension Office, and Joni Torres can get you started with that. A lot of parties involved with this, Community Schools and Recreation, Cooperative Extension, and our Public Health Department. And again, our, we have staff that are involved with the Community Garden Committee, and really starting to see some good results with working with Wintergreen School, for example. They bring some of the students over during the day, just really more of an educational component, from everything, how to grow plants, to how you might prepare them for meals. Natural Environment, seek funding for storm-related studies. This is a high priority issue as well. Stormwater is a major issue here for us in eastern North Carolina, and ensuring that we treat that before it leaves the site, the development site. We have been fortunate, we have received funding through the Clean Water Management Trust Fund for studies along Swift Creek and Fort Swamp, and we'll be bringing back recommendations about that. Other agencies involved, of course, Pitt Soil and Water, and the Southeastern Drainage Under Housing, continue to enforce county's policy to clean up abandoned properties and seek grant funding to assist with efforts. I will tell you, we continually get complaints and requests for this type of assistance throughout the county. We just mentioned here, under Implementation Efforts, during this current year, over the last five months, we've done, we've conducted five investigations, and one of which has been cleaned up. Others may not have qualified for the policy that's in place to actually require any enforcement, but just today, we had staff out on site at two locations, looking at two other complaints. So, this is an ongoing issue, whether it might be a home that needs to be condemned, or whether it's just a yard that's grown up, and that's where we have to go out and make an interpretation, if we've got the enforcement techniques available quite yet. And I will tell you, our Commissioners, a couple of our Commissioners in particular are concerned about some of the maintenance efforts on some of the properties, and we may be seeing some additional policies go in place here. So, again, right now, very high priority. Community Health, and one of the strategies here is extending walking trails to connect more uses, and in particular, alternate modes of transportation. This is a high priority as well, and I'll tell you, one of the projects that we've been working on very closely with Community Schools, as well as Public Health, is our crosswalk that would connect the farmer's market side of County Home Road to the District Park side with the community garden on the opposite side of the road. So, we've met with DOT officials and some other agencies to try to get this pushed along, and if all goes well, we're looking for a little grant money to come through in the next month or so. We hope to make this a reality this summer, before Wintergreen School opens back up in August, because we need to get the crosswalk in before the school traffic starts back up. And then finally, the final section, Implementation Strategy, under Implementation and Administration, develop a review process to monitoring, to monitor implementation of the land use plan. This is high, we want to continually go back through our plan annually, to ensure we're meeting our high priority issues, and also ensure that we've got everything in place, or if other new strategies need to be added. So, again, utilize the implementation strategies and priorities to develop an annual review process. We'll probably bring this back to you in the next six to eight months, as we do an annual review. So, with that, you kind of get a feel for what that matrix, what that chart is to show you. What we're looking for is some feedback from the Board, again, for tonight, just wanted to review some of these items, and gather any input you might have on the spot, and next month, if we have a meeting, or a subsequent month when we do have a meeting, we'll be looking for the Planning Board's endorsement, and any other feedback you might have about this. And again, very vital for us as staff to know how you feel about certain implementation strategies, how they need to be prioritized, so we can work them into our work schedule throughout the year. So, with that, Ms. Barefoot, we'll entertain any questions or any feedback.
All right, anybody have any comments, feedback?
Ever gonna build anything anywhere other than County Home Road?
Well...
Everything seems to be out there, and that's a long wish.
It is, there are...
Penney Hills are there.
There are some walking trails at school facilities. I will say, most of the more intensive-type development, ball fields, some of the other soccer fields, probably are going to be located primarily at that facility, since it's somewhat centrally located, but the school sites themselves have walking trails, and wish, next meeting, Beth will make a note of this, we'll certainly bring back to you, we have assisted Community Schools and the Health Department in compiling the recreation facilities throughout the county. There's a nice brochure that Tracy Cash in our office has assisted with, and I know our Chairman had asked, actually requested that information, we've already forwarded a copy to him, but we'll be sure to bring that brochure back to you, and give you an idea of where the facilities are around the county. Good question.
James, do you know how many schools there are that does not have a crosswalk to get to different neighborhoods, to the neighborhood across from the school?
I don't know of many that do. We're working on Ridgewood, there's some adjacent communities that don't have a, I'll say, a bona fide walk over to it. There are some communities or neighborhoods that are connected, but there are some that are disconnected too. Some of the more rural schools, probably isn't practical to have crosswalks, maybe like across Highway 43 to Chicotte, or some of those, it's just not necessarily appropriate there. But certainly those in the towns in the city of Greenville, we're looking at trying to make that available to folks.
What about South Central, is there anything that can be done over there with the neighborhoods?
Probably, and there's another item that we'll get to in the informational items, some of the improvements to the roads that are adjacent to some of these schools may provide an opportunity to improve the walkability to the schools. For them to go in on their own, on these two-lane roads, there's going to have to be some grant monies made available, or something like that, but if there are some improvements to the roadway, typically now, they're including some of these other improvements, such as crosswalks, or maybe even a bike trail, bike lane. Good questions.
One more thing, I got a question. Older road, I know we're supposed to go in and redo right there at Browns Creek, do you know when that project is supposed to start?
You're talking about the bridge replacement?
Yeah, the bridge replacement, I thought it was supposed to be...
It should be real soon, I know we had a meeting last year at the Boys and Girls Club where they were finalizing the design, but I don't have a schedule on that, but I'll get that for you.
I've had several folks ask me, and I said, you know your answer.
Yeah, we'll look that up for you and report back to you. Other questions? Okay, on to the informational items.
Good.
One thing that you guys will be involved with, as you have been in the past, we just completed our Hazard Mitigation Plan, and you might recall, it was a multi-jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. It included nine of the 10 municipalities here in the county. Seems like each time we've updated it, we brought in a few more jurisdictions. We started out just solely as unincorporated Pitt County, and continue to add some municipalities. The State Division of Emergency Management has approached Pitt County to be involved with a regional hazard mitigation plan, and with this, there appears to be some planning monies available that would allow us to develop this plan. There's a long grant application process and review process we'd be involved with, and more than likely, those funds would be made available next year, probably 18-month planning process to pull this information together, so we'd be right close to our five-year expiration date in 2015. So, all said, the state has grouped us with a certain set of counties, we didn't really have any input here, but nonetheless, we're willing to go along if the grant monies come along with it. Pitt County, as you can see, would be paired with Green, Wayne, Lenore, and Jones County. These are some communities we don't have a lot of work, existing working relationships with. We typically are paired with the Edgecombe, and Martins, and Beaufort Counties for the most part, maybe Craven. So, this will be a new planning exercise, and what has happened so far, we have taken this before the Board of Commissioners, they have agreed for Pitt County, primarily the Planning Department and Emergency Management to be the lead agency for the plan, and just this week, yesterday, we met with all the municipal representatives for the county, and trying to solicit them to become involved in this process as well, and have gotten some favorable responses so far. So, we'll let you know about this, the grant application has to be submitted next month, so we're actively getting these municipal officials to sign on to this if they're interested. Secondary Roads Program, real quickly, this money continues to be depleted, smaller and smaller amount each time, it seems like, coming in annually to Pitt County. The ones that are being considered this year, and have been endorsed by the Commissioners, it's the second portion of the Voice of American Sites B Road, this is out near Blackjack, and about two miles' worth of road to be majorly redone. There's been some issues along that road, at a very poor subbase, so DOT's going in and making some major improvements to stabilize that road. The other ones actually are within municipalities, and are sorely needed. The first one is a portion of 10th Street in the city of Greenville between, basically the railroad track on the east end, excuse me, the west end, near Dickinson Avenue over to Evans Street, so about a third of a mile, that's going to be about a quarter of a million dollars to do the work that they're talking about there. The other portion is within the town of Winneville, and it's on Main Street for about a third of a mile as well, from NC-11 over, across the railroad track right there, practically in front of WH Robinson School. So, that's the other, those are the three items that are being considered, and you can see, we've got some contingencies built in as well, so hopefully, we'll see those improvements over the next year. Another transportation improvement process and project, and this gets back to Ms. Barefoot's question about, over at South Central High School, what improvements might could be put in there. This is the extension of Fire Tower Road on the west end, right near Pitt Community College. Department of Transportation held a workshop here at PCC last week to talk about the alternatives that are currently on the table. You may not be able to tell exactly from this map, but this is the best available map. map we had from that, uh, workshop. Here's Pitt Community College and the current terminus of Fire Tower Road right at Memorial Drive, and from there, there are five different alternatives that head to the west, either along a new alignment to get over to Davenport Farm Road, or another new alignment to get down to Four Lines Road that goes in front of South Central High School. All these alignments are proposed to tie in with the future Southwest Bypass, and these are the orange lines here on the left side of the screen. So, again, several different, um, alternatives. This will impact current development patterns along either Davenport Farm Road or, uh, Four Lines Road. And again, we're looking at a four-lane at least, uh, facility, very comparable to what Fire Tower Road, uh, has been improved up to. This will be an extension of that, and most likely also have turn lanes. So, um, we've got more information available at our office if people are interested, and again, this, uh, will be further studied, and they'll be collecting additional information here as well. Any questions about that project? Also, uh, one old item to follow up on, you may recall, you guys have dealt with some changes to an inclusion of, of definition of a halfway house into the zoning ordinance. Uh, we had our first one to be requested for placement here in Pitt County, and in February, uh, the board actually denied that particular request, so, uh, wanted to bring you up to date on that conditional use permit. The other thing you might have heard about too, has been a lot of discussion about the no-wake zone on the Tar River. Our office has been involved with that to a certain extent. Uh, information was provided to the Board of Commissioners for their consideration in repealing the no-wake zone. Had a public hearing, a lot of folks came in and, and came out in opposition to that, so, as it stands now, the no-wake zone at Sane Beach is still in effect. So, uh, the buoys have been reinstalled along the Tar River from where the old Grimeson Bridge was, uh, currently located up to the outlet of Chicot Creek where it, uh, converges with the Tar River. So, uh, no-wake zone still in effect at Sane Beach. Other information in your package, uh, the two, or actually three-month reports, uh, included, and a lot of other information and articles included as well. So, welcome any questions or comments you might have for us.
Anybody have any comments from the board? Okay. Let's light entertain a motion to adjourn then.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.